We have a quorum calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And I would ask Tracy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mudd's here. This meeting is more of a working meeting than a normal Planning Commission meeting. We will not cover minutes from the previous meeting. That will be at the next meeting. And we will move right on to matters of discussion and review adequate public facilities ordinance. And Jeanine's perfect with her timing. She knew I was going to call upon her and she just got in the chair. Director Harrington, it's all yours.
There are two in the folder. There's a PFO.
Oh, that one was, yeah, no, don't pull that one up. I started to work on one, but I ran out of time. So, yes, thank you for joining us tonight. We're kind of just continuing the discussion on adequate public facilities ordinance. We'll get into a little bit of the other elements, water, sewer. And we've had the topic of emergency services come up. So we'll kind of have a brief discussion on that and kind of talk about where we might be able to go with that. And actually, do you want to start with that since you're time sensitive? Okay. Okay. So actually, I'll probably let Jamie get started on his portion. He did a nice PowerPoint for you and we'll get started on that side. And then we'll kind of get into some other, some of the other areas and talk about some water, sewer, school seats, and emergency services. Jamie, take it away.
Thank you so much. And for the record, Jamie Kendrick from Mead and Hunt. And also for the record, did have an opportunity to chat with a couple of commissioners by phone over the past two weeks to walk through some of the issues in more detail. And I apologize for those who that I did not get to despite our valiant efforts, Councilman, or Councilman, right? But it was, it was good to have some of those conversations to clarify some issues and hopefully to get some more direction from you all this evening. So I should also add that Mike Lewis from my team is on the line. Mike is actually in Wisconsin this evening. So we appreciate him being here. What I wanted to do tonight is to follow up and probe a little bit more on the question of developments in the pipeline and what to do about them. And then also to pick a point in time for projects that are not in the pipeline and talk about what the process might be from an adequate public facilities perspective there. So if you go to the fourth slide, I believe, and I think I forgot to delete the first two. Can I drive or no? No, don't worry about it. It's fine. So slide four. There we go. Perfect. Don't move. So just by way of reminder, you know, in order to get to an adequate public facilities ordinance, you kind of go through a three-step process. You have to establish findings of fact. In this case, yes, we have a problem or we can reasonably anticipate a problem that we can define as being related to new development. You're not in establishing those findings of fact necessarily accounting for existing traffic on the roadway network or looking back at what did or didn't happen with other developments. But it is a forward-looking process. Second, you need to, whether in a full APF or on a project-specific basis, you have to establish a rational nexus between the development that is coming through the process or developments that are coming through the process and what one might do to address those impacts. And the third is you have to apportion responsibility proportionately to the development. Now, all of those are highly subjective, but we can certainly put some framework around some of those. Excuse me. So on the first one, finding of fact, next slide, please. I think this is becoming a little bit more obvious by the day. And certainly when you look at the number of developments in your pipeline is reasonably easy to ascertain. Next slide. I can't speak without PowerPoint. Sorry. It's become more than a crutch. You know, you, there are, you know, kind of four things in play. One is that there are existing intersections that are at a failing condition and we can go into level of service if you want to. There are gaps in the bike ped network that, or let me just finish this one.
Excuse the interruption, just for process.
Sure.
Although I have interrupted, is it okay to interrupt with questions?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So when you say existing intersections are approaching failing, two things come to my mind. You probably mean one. One is just physically, they're just falling apart. They need to be repaved or rebased or whatever. Or is it just they're too small for the traffic?
The latter.
Okay.
Yep. So the former maintenance, you can't really address through an APF. That's, you know, that's not related to the new development.
That addresses something I would note later. Thank you.
Sure. There are, as we've discussed, a lot of gaps in the bike ped network. And it's not just that there are gaps, but that those gaps force a reliance for almost all trips then on using one's car to get around there by increasing the number of auto trips. Third, there are missing links in the roadway network. So that could be something like, for example, a roadway that crosses the railroad tracks at a Heritage Green, or excuse me, Pine Grove. Or it could be the need for a further link through the Southwest or any other number of kind of subdivision intersection points that were not really ever closed up or linked up, could have been. So if you had those links in the network, traffic would have more ways to flow and theoretically would dissipate. And then frankly, or finally, the last one is that you have unfunded projects, whether it be in the town proper or on the county or state roads that are, you know, within or proximate to the town that would address that additional traffic that is coming through. So those, you have to establish findings of fact, just like you would do for any other plan review that you do. Next up, next slide. So then you need a process to address those facts. So new development comes in, what do you do? So there's a couple of basic approaches. You can do a project-specific traffic impact study, which you all have seen many times before. These are the four probably most recent and significant ones that have come through here. Excuse me. Or you could do something a little more comprehensive. You could use your existing transportation element of your comprehensive plan as the basis of your addressing the facts that you established. So presumably in your comprehensive transportation plan, or excuse me, in your comprehensive plan, you have a transportation element that is, was born of some analysis, which I can attest to having helped to develop the comp plan, that there was some analysis to it. Or you could do something that's more kind of geographically specific, but not development-specific. So for example, this Southwest study that we're doing right now. So the area plans still aggregate and forecast all of the trips and develop a high-level mitigation. They don't necessarily get down to a, you know, this intersection should be, you know, four lanes. Is it three lanes? Or, you know, these two should be straight and this one should be right. But you establish where the issues are and then you dig into it a little bit further as the project development process goes on. Excuse me. The project-specific traffic impact studies do get to a very fine-grained level of detail. Some might argue too fine of a level of detail because they're viewed just in isolation. So next, next slide. So let me just talk about that for a minute. So I think as I've said before, there are limitations on traffic impact studies. There is the frog in the boiling pot effect where, you know, the temperature gets a little bit warmer, the traffic grows a little bit more intense, but nobody really ever does anything because it's just kind of, you know, incrementally noticeable until you're boiled. And when you, when you conduct traffic study by traffic study by traffic study, you don't really take into account everything else that's going on. I mean, as a technical matter, you probably do with background development, but it never really plays out in a good way. Or you have smaller developments that don't really trigger the need for a study. So right now in Charles County, the standard is a development that generates 35 peak hour trips, which is roughly equivalent to 40 housing units. And then, you know, that TIS process can be, you know, unwieldy. It can be tedious, it can be time-consuming and for results that are, you know, may not get you where you want to be. And then particularly so when there's multiple parties involved. Or I would say in this case, well, it says multiple developers here, but I say in this case, multiple levels of government. So here you'll have the town reviewing, the county reviewing, the state reviewing. Next slide, please. And the third, then the third step is to develop a process on that rough proportionality. So what the county uses is a, for their mitigation approach is, again, somewhat subjective and really hard to, to pin down what effective mitigation could be. So their standard is basically if you, if you have a failing intersection and you add 1% to it, you have to mitigate that 1% of traffic. Now, in a, let's say you have a development of, that generates 200 trips, peak hour trips. I still don't know, and that, it's the, it's the last 10 trips that push you over the edge. I'm not sure how you'd mitigate for a 10th of a trip, right? Which comes back to the reason why you do a more comprehensive approach. Or even if you have, if you're already at a level of service D, which is the standard, and you have 200 trips, you have to mitigate for those 200 trips. And even still, it's kind of hard to do. You might get a turn lane out of that, depending on where you are, you might not. But it becomes really hard at the individual intersection or link level to mitigate those smaller impacts. And then the Planning Commission is basically the decider, if you will, on what is acceptable mitigation. So it becomes a negotiated process in the end. And it could be fee and loo, could be some off-site project, could be something jointly among several developers. But it, you know, if you're looking for an objective test in any event in terms of what the mitigation should be, you're not going to find it, generally speaking. If you're looking for an objective test about what the level of service standard should be, you can get there. People will play all kinds of numbers games to do that, but you can get there. Next slide. So we talked about last time, the kind of consensus of the commissioners was that we should really look to the Charles County APF as a guide, which I will say, I think, makes sense for larger projects that are not yet in the pipeline. And we'll talk about what that means in a second. Now, there are certain things in the Charles County process that probably need to be adjusted. And when I really sit down and go through it, it actually almost may end up being a rewrite, but we'll see. It may be that we adopt their ordinance by reference and then have some, some special regulations or delegations to the commissioner, what have you. So they have three or four, depending on how you count it, analytical tests. And I won't go into the technical detail, but one is called critical lane volume. One is called highway capacity manual. One is, I forget how they're doing, but they're all applied in different situations. But they assume that a development has to go through all three of those tests, right? For a, you know, smaller, for a more compact area, what you're really looking for is a more micro-oriented analysis. So critical lane volume is really, is really oriented towards major arterial projects, you know, your 301s to some extent, and not the intersections. Here, we're mostly looking, I think, in La Plata at smaller sections of road, smaller roads, and mostly intersection-type congestion to be, to be some of the solutions that we're, we're looking for. So we would tighten up that, whoops, excuse me. We would tighten up what that analytical process is. They have, I would say, rather loose phasing requirements. So in theory, if you have a subdivision of 400 units and you bring them in 20 at a time, you may well find yourself exempt from having to do a study. They do not require a full study for the entirety of a development project, which frankly is beyond me, but that's what their process is. It's a good way to get around the system to come in at 20, 30, 40 units at a time and be under that, that trip threshold. I can guarantee you that there is very little mitigation on a, on things that come in for permits, 20 or 30 units at a time. So that's something we would suggest that we tighten up here. Sure.
What I thought I heard you say was the Charles County APF primarily would be geared toward new projects. So how do they handle these growing projects? For example, just north of La Plata, everything on Rosewick Road and Charles, Charles Parkway, right? Is that all in some 30-year plan and already built in or?
To some extent, yes. And I don't know the full history of St. Charles, for example, but my, if I'm guessing, there was, as that property was, you know, properties were acquired and assembled, there was a master, master site development plan for the development district that indicated the general location of roadways. There was some kind of development rights and responsibilities agreement for how certain portions that would be built. And it probably included roads, water, sewer, you know, and everything else, given the scale of it. And the developer, I would imagine, paid for certain parts, but probably not for the whole thing. Excuse me. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Another thing we would recommend addressing with the-
Jamie, I'm sorry. This is John Mudd.
Hello, John. You probably know that in far more detail than I.
Yeah. I just want to comment on an earlier comment you made about Charles County's process and the incremental phased approach that you referred to. I mean, I've never been aware where Charles County ordinance allows a project to incrementally test its APF. If it's Project ABC in Charles County or anywhere that has 300 units proposed, 500 units proposed, the study is required to assess the impact of those total 300 units, even though they may be phased over 10 years. So they're looking at the design year, the maximum impact the project will have. The other thing they do, and this answers the other question that the chairman asked, what about all the other stuff around it, you know, things already been approved? Well, background traffic and volumes of traffic on associated roads, as well as the projected volumes at the design year are all factored in to that particular study. So everything's measured at that one point for the totality of the project. So my only point there is that as we progress with an APF ordinance, we need to make sure that there's no loophole that allows a phasing approach to a project, but it requires a total project analysis. So just wanted to clarify that from my perspective. Thank you.
Wifi hooks up. I'm going to go to the Charles County APF manual because they're actually, not to get into a contradiction, Mr. Mudd, but the, the manual actually talks about their own, you may be right that they look at the entire impact, but they're only required to mitigate for any particular phase that comes in.
Yes. Yeah, mitigation can be phased, but the study determines the impact for the totality of the project. So let's say there is a mitigation required, but it's not tripped until the 200th lot. Well, the developer can wait and propose and build those improvements at that phase. Don't have to do it upfront. So that is a true reason. But again, the study has to look at the totality of the project from day one.
Yeah. And so I think, in fact, what ends up happening is unless they come in with a large phase, they essentially are able to skip past some of those. It's the way I understand it. So there are, there are lots of loopholes in the vesting and in the subdivision that you have to work very hard to make, to close them or not even allow them to exist in the first interest, first instance. Let me one second to just pull up.
Well, Jamie, while you're looking that up, this might be a question for Commissioner Mudd because of your experience at Charles County. You know, I drive on Rosewick and St. Charles Parkway all the time. And I'm envisioning now, because I've seen so much building going on there in the last several years, that, you know, there will be homes for as far as you can see on both sides of that road all the way. One side of me says it's hard to believe that someone had all of that built into their plan, you know, 25, 30 years ago when it all started. The other side of me is the guy in the car driving. How many more lights will end up on, on that road as a result of all that construction that we see happening now? And is that incremental? Is that built into the original plan? Any thoughts on that, Mr. Mudd?
Yeah. The Charles, the St. Charles planned unit development originally approved in 1972 and subsequent DOCKET 90 is the famous document related to that project. You have to realize, St. Charles as a planned development essentially has built from scratch 90% of the roads it utilizes. And therefore, the rationale was reached that since St. Charles is going to be building to code standard roads as part of this project, they were exempt from having to study the impact of the project through APF. So they were granted a project-wide APF exemption through DOCKET 90 based on the simple fact that they were building brand-new roads to begin with. And the assumption is that those would be operating at peak efficiency after construction. The other side of the question is very valid. St. Charles is a huge planned unit development. They still have major neighborhoods to finish. And absolutely, those cars and those people and the traffic related to that project will have impacts throughout Charles County. Again, to me, it's another reason why we need to do traffic impact analyses for the town of La Plata because all of that traffic over the years is going to continue to intensify, will continue to increase volumes on Rosewick Road and Radio Station Road and so on. And those things have to be accounted for as we look forward to future studies.
So, Mr. Mudd, I think we're probably both correct on the, on the phasing of the traffic studies. So on page, section 3.2 of the county manual, which is page nine, talks about for the study, the design year usually corresponds to the build-out of the project, although maybe shorter for particular project phase, projects which are done in phases. In these cases, the analysis shall be done for each phase, and this is the important part, as application is made for that phase.
Right.
Right? As application is made. So if somebody comes in with an application that is less than, I guess, 35 trips, then they effectively don't have to do anything with that phase.
Right. Well, that, that's a serious loophole, which at least during my tenure was never accepted or utilized. All the studies performed were for the totality of the project at the design year.
Yeah.
Mitigation, yes. Mitigation can be phased in proportionally with when the impact occurs. But I would suggest as we proceed as a town ordinance, we make sure we pay attention to that particular issue.
There's also a couple of other pieces of their, their phasing process that allow, in our view, rather large loopholes. So for example, this next one is intersection approaches should be the basis of measurement rather than the entire intersection. And I will give a case study in the town that happened, that's pending now, where there's an unsignaled side street or an unsignaled street. And the side street is a level of service F, meaning you really can't get into traffic without taking your life into your hands. But the intersection itself as an unsignaled operates as an A or a B, if I recall correctly. And in total, because of the balance of traffic being relatively small in the side streets, the developer's not required to do anything with regard to that failing side street intersection because they look at the totality of the intersection. And that leaves, frankly, in this case, that leaves their residents to be in a really bad position. And part of me says, well, that's on them. But at the end of the day, you all end up having to deal with that as a, as a commission and a council. So one of the things we would request or would suggest is that we tighten up how, how level of service is measured from the approach, roadway approach level rather than from the aggregate level.
So Jamie, when we talk about, you talked about, you know, site-specific travel or traffic impact studies, would they look at that? Would they say, okay, this side street is going to, as a result of this project, be 30% increase in traffic? Would that be included in the study?
In a, in a project-specific traffic study, yes.
Okay. The reason why I ask that question, then that study would become visible to the public and the public could have an opportunity to make comment on that, that, you know, I'm going to have to add another half hour to my commute to work just because I can't get out of my neighborhood.
Correct. But the however is what becomes the standard of mitigation. Right? So if, if, if the intersection in totality is acceptable, you can't require the developer to do anything about the failing approach as a, as a legal matter. So people can complain all they want, but you don't have a legal leg to stand on if you've not required mitigation at the approach level.
So could I use an example of that? Right here in La Plata, Willow Lane at Route 6. School lets out. All these cars and buses are coming down there and traffic happens to be totally blocked up because 488 seems to start traffic flow when you're heading, was that east on 6? Would one of the mitigations be, okay, you can no longer turn left from Willow onto 6? I mean, is that an example of mitigation?
Um, eesh. I'm not sure that is a mitigation. I think actually it's probably almost be the opposite of mitigation in some respects. But I, I wouldn't call that mitigation. In that case, the traffic signal warrant was triggered. And so there will be a traffic signal installed there. Now, one, on a very pure level, I think I mentioned this before, one could ask, well, is a traffic signal, you know, mitigation? Because from a network perspective, you know, the fewer signals, the better. If you're only concerned about massive flow. But that's not entirely fair because in this case, that signal is trying to address the deficiency on the side streets, right? And in this case, that signal was not required as a matter of mitigation per se, but as a matter of, you know, safety and meeting volume thresholds that weren't necessarily traffic impact thresholds. There's, there's your traffic warrant studies, your signal warrant studies and the traffic mitigation processes. And the former is really related to looking at existing traffic patterns independent of anything new.
I mean, that intersection, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that, that's going from a through road with a side road approach from the school now to a full-blown four-way intersection. And the signal is crucial in the sense that that signal will provide controlled left turns out of Willow Lane. It'll provide control left lanes out of Pine Grove and the like. Does that mean people are going to sit at that light longer than they do today? Generally, yes, but it has to be to allow four different competing movements to have their turn to move forward. You, you can't let the through traffic win the day and side traffic back up to the school. So it's a matter of trade-offs between each of the movements during especially peak hours that the signal is crucial. And that's why I continue to harp on why that signal at that location is so crucial.
I think if I recall correctly, in that instance, Jeanine, you may recall it, probably was not until around the 200 or so unit that that signal would have met the mitigation standard?
Much higher than that. It was like in the 700s.
Okay. But we managed to impose upon SHA our will to-
They, they did agree to install it sooner than, rather than later since we had the council's support on that. So they have submitted the initial traffic installation plans to the state and to the county as well as the town for review.
Okay. So the next thing about the county standard is that as a technical matter, La Plata is considered to be rural in their grand map from a traffic perspective. So we would recommend that they adopt the standard that they use for the Waldorf Transportation. So we would recommend that they adopt the standard that they use for the Waldorf Transportation Improvement District, which is a level of service D rather than a level of service A. Level service A or B is rural, which is kind of...
Funding area.
Yeah, it's, you can take this, you can see two sides of this coin here. Level of service A in a rural area is what they experience every day, you know, all day. I was in Cobb Island this morning at rush hour, and if two other cars passed me, that was a lot. And one of them was my coworker, so heading to the same meeting. So clearly, that's an appropriate standard there. Now, if you move into a more urbanized environment, you expect to have more traffic. Now, what is that threshold for more versus unreasonable? But in the Waldorf Development District, where I would say it's somewhat comparable to La Plata, it's a level of service D as the standard. You could go down to a C. I think you would run into a lot of opposition from folks who are building roads, but at this point, or excuse me, a lot of opposition from folks who are building development projects in town, just because everything would require significant mitigation at a level of service C. And I'm not sure that a level of service C, if you're living in an urbanized area, is really a reasonable expectation, so.
I have a question for you, Jamie. Just to clarify, my mind, what is the specific benefit of adopting that threshold? I know the designations, but what is the benefit to the town of La Plata from a planning and...
Oh, I mean, I think, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure I should have used the word benefit, but I mean, I think it's a matter of practicality. And yeah, the great, you would get to the greatest benefit at a level of service A or B, right? Because that would require, you know, massive amounts of mitigation, widening, you know, 301 to 10 lanes wide and widening Charles Street to six lanes wide, et cetera, et cetera. That's not, I don't think, what you desire as a town. So finding that balance is necessary. And I think what we see in most urbanized, even urbanized, small towns is D is the standard. And D basically means you can get through it a signal, you know, most of the time in one cycle. Next one is to emphasize multimodal mitigation. So, you know, the construction of sidewalks, you know, bicycle facilities, you know, et cetera, especially in the downtown area. And not that the county does not have multimodal mitigation or multimodal analysis, but the mitigation ends up being in the context of the site plan itself, right? Sidewalk frontage, you know, requirements, things like that. Whereas here, we would suggest that there is value in creating a total bicycle pedestrian network that was identified in the comp plan as a priority, and that that mitigation be emphasized to be multimodal. So not everything, you know, is going to be, you know, something that can be mitigated with a turning movement or an extra lane or what have you. The next one is most jurisdictions at a larger scale discount what they call pass-by trips. So this is if you're building a Exxon station, most or any certain, I mean, let me be retailer-neutral here, if you're building a gas station, most jurisdictions will probably exempt about 90% of those trips that go into and out of the gas station because they're considered pass-by, meaning that that gas station does not directly generate the trip. Somebody's going from home to work or work to home or home to shopping and stopping for gas. Now, the problem with that argument is that in a constrained urban environment, those operational movements to get into and out of that service station are much more significant in their impact than, you know, being somewhere along 301 where you otherwise have relatively free-flow conditions. So we would suggest that, to some extent, pass-by trips be retained in the analysis. That is non-standard, but it's becoming more, it's becoming slightly more common in urbanized areas. And then the last one is to require developers to submit their plans and their traffic analysis to the town before the county and the state, which frankly is technically what should happen anyway. But we talked last time about triangulation, and a lot of times they'll take you to the state and say, hey, the state's okay with it, you know, why can't the town be okay with it? And the county's good with it, county's not good with it, the state's okay with it, why can't, you know? And so we're just like, you got to come here first. If you don't come here first, we might sit on it for 60 days.
That would be new? This might be a question for Director Harrington. We don't know whether to require the applicant to come to us first?
We don't have an APFO. So we don't have, you know, the, like, for projects that were kind of utilizing the county's APFO, there have been instances where they've just submitted it to the county and the state because we technically don't have the ordinance. It's their ordinance, they're reviewing it per their ordinance. Now, we're getting better at that, but I think it would be good to have that regulated. This is the process. You submit to us, I send it to, you know, state and county like I do with soil conservation, you know, stormwater reviews or utility reviews, any of those types of things.
And the reason to have the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So basically, what you're doing, you're telling us what, because we did recommend to use the Charles County APFO, you're saying with modifications, which we knew that they would have to be modified to meet some of the needs of the town because the county does not do that right now. So what you're showing us is what the county APFO currently has, and you're giving us the modifications.
Correct.
That wasn't clear to me. I'm like, where are we going?
Sorry, sorry.
What are we talking about tonight?
Before I put it into an ordinance language, I figured I should hit the high points. Sorry, I should have been clear about that. It would, yeah, so it would, the ordinance would say something to the effect of, we adopt, you know, the county code section, whatever, whatever, except that.
It's just like we do with the building code. So we adopt the International Code Council Building Code, and then we just say, except for...
Yeah. So earlier you said, when we, once we adopt our APFO using some of the county's language and adding our own language, this APFO would be used for future developments, not the ones currently in existing. I think that's what Chairman Gann heard, but he was thinking you were saying we would use it. We wouldn't be using it until future developments, but it's only once we develop our APFO, it can't be used for current development. It has to be for anything that comes in the future.
So we'll talk in a few minutes about vesting and reasonable expectations of the development process, et cetera.
There are expiration dates of certain approvals. So if it's under construction, that's one thing. If we've just approved the preliminary plat or the final plat and they haven't moved forward with anything, there is expiration date, so.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
The only point I would make...
We'll talk about what those should be in a second. Did, okay.
Jamie, John Mudd, the only point I would make to the past conversation is that when the town adopts its APF ordinance, the town is in the driver's seat. The town is the entity that the developer files the project with, files the study with, and ultimately, the final decision is with the town of La Plata. Courtesy reviews by the county and the state, because they may involve both of those roads, are important. But the point is, once this is adopted, this is our ordinance, and it's our duty to apply it and be in the driver's seat for these type of issues, so.
And I would say, as a further point there, it allows you to define the mitigation.
Correct.
So, you know, a development that might want to do something on 301 and Washington Avenue because it may benefit them, even though the development is further south, you know, south of Rosewood Road, let's say, well, that may not be of great benefit or the highest benefit to the town, but it's the easiest one for them to do. State Highway loves it because they're getting something out of it. It's a county road too, so the county likes it, but doesn't do anything for you all because it's not in the town. So you all get to define the mitigation far more clearly. So to some extent, yes, this is how it should be happening anyway, but because you don't have the APF, you know, they can kind of wave at Janine and say, you know, thanks for reading our study. And the only reason, for example, that a Pine Grove has to go to a traffic impact study other than kind of goodwill and what you all may have negotiated over the past 40 years is because they're seeking access to a state road, a county road, right? Otherwise, they would not have had to... If Maryland 6 were just a town road, right?
Actually, I want to say it was a condition of their master site development plan because I had a conversation with Ben Eckley at the county, and he said just because they access our road doesn't mean it would trigger a traffic impact study. So I think that that was something that was negotiated in with the master site development plan.
And that's part of the other broader point that we'll talk about when we get to the vested, the vesting issue, is your leverage points, right? So next slide. So that was recommendation one, is kind of what are the adjustments we would make to the county's ordinance? But the bigger question here is what do you do about stuff that's already in the pipeline? And what do we consider pipeline and not pipeline? So next slide. So this is all of the projects, you know, in La Plata that are, let's call it known. And the lighter the color, the less baked it is, let's say. Baked, meaning they have fewer entitlements to proceed. The darker it is, it's either under construction, it has its final plat, it's, there's a, you could, they would make it, the developer could make a reasonable argument that to apply something at the building permit level would violate the kind of reasonable and consistency of the development process, right? And that's, I think, language that you have in your code for a couple of other elements right now already. So you've got to figure out kind of like, what is the cutoff point by which you start to bring folks into this process? Pine Grove, you have, is a little bit of a different situation. Their first phase, whichever neighborhood this is, O or K, K, and probably the next two neighborhoods are, you have an agreement with them that up to 750 units, basically, they don't have any mitigation. They're doing the signal at 6 and Willow, they're doing a couple of other...
750 or three years, whichever.
Three years, whichever comes first. Sorry, yes. So I don't even know where we are in that, probably at the end of year one at this point, I'd bet. Excuse me.
That's good clarification. When is that three-year start or when did it start?
It started when we made the agreement, but it's basically been probably close to, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have the exact date, but we kind of came together and met on it and had that agreement with the county earlier last year.
Now, Stagecoach, for example, is, they have preliminary plat, and it's about a year old now, I think?
It was approved on June 7...
Six months old.
2022.
Yes. So they have about 18 months to put a, potentially to put a shovel in the ground before their preliminary plat expires.
It expires on June 7th of 2023.
Of '23, not 25, that was two years.
No, not for a final, or a preliminary plat approval. We haven't updated our subdivision code yet, so it still says preliminary plat is valid for one year unless extended by the planning commission.
That's right, and they can extend it to one, two years, one time each, is that?
Something along those lines.
Something like that. So you'll have to figure out kind of what is, we'll have to talk about what is the right balance here. All right, they came in, they got a plat, they're going through their, you know, financial processes, their other due diligence, you know, at what point do you start to, do they start to lock in their development on certain financial assumptions and permitting assumptions and regulatory assumptions versus, you know, taking the risk that code might change, right? And that's a policy question, and we can certainly make some recommendations on that. Yes, sir?
I have a question. If I hear you clearly, we're talking about the point at which, in my mind, the developer has some legal recourse or ability to refuse the ordinance. So my question is, wouldn't there be some case law or study on that that we could use as a baseline?
Yep, there is, there's definitely case law on that, and again, it's subjective. If you, you have to make, you have to make your case as to why, in your findings of fact, as to why you've set it there. Now, they can then come back and challenge your findings of fact. They can't really challenge, they can challenge whether your decision was arbitrary or capricious if you adopted findings of fact, it makes it that much more difficult. So, but I think in the end of it, setting aside the case law, there's just a reasonableness test to it all. So Steeplechase Phase, I'm sorry, Stagecoach, sorry. Steeplechase Phase 3, which just got its final plat...
Preliminary plat. Preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat approved. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm getting them all turned around. They're, you know, moving down the path. So do they have a year? Do they have two years? You know, what do you all want that threshold to be?
We also have vesting rights that are already within our zoning code. So I did make a note in my comments on the draft of the APFO that we already have a vesting rights section, and do we want to update that or, you know, do anything else with that? That's a question that I, for the, really for the town attorney. When we initially did our zoning code update in 2018, that was a question that was sent to our previous town attorney, and he basically wrote that section to make sure that it was in compliance with any case law or any of those types of things. So we do have a vesting section, which basically says anything that was approved to a certain extent prior to the adoption of the date of this ordinance, it would be exempt from the new regulations unless a certain amount of time passes or if they want to change their preliminary plat and come back for, you know, reapproval, then they may be subject to the new requirements. So that will definitely be reviewed by the town attorney to make sure that we're in compliance.
I think the language now, if I recall, is the implementation and validity periods of all permits and approvals has not expired. So it'd be the one year or the two years, and I think the question becomes, does expired mean their one-year period or their one year plus their two renewals or, and that really is a policy call that you all have to have to make. Okay, so that, so the red line there to the right is everything that is the number of dwelling units that really hasn't had any, is not in any posture where it would be under an agreement or under a, an approval. So two-thirds, three-quarters, well, if you take out the annexationary, the hub and Hawthorne yards, thank you, you know, you are at about 80% of your dwelling units are already under some form of an agreement, either in the sense that they are, you know, at preliminary or final plat, or you have an agreement like Pine Grove where you've said, you know, we're going to look at this every 750 trips or three years, whatever the case may be. So you're down to a fairly small number of cases in recommendation one, right, which was adopt the county APF. Now, we know that all 3,698 of those units are not going to be constructed, you know, in the first year of, from them having gotten their preliminary plat or final plat. So again, it gives you some flexibility, and the question becomes like, what is that, what is that reasonableness test of when do you want to make them do a new study? Next slide. These are all of those, so we can, we don't need to go through all that. Next slide. So recommendation number two, because you have so many projects that are reasonably in the pipeline, is that you establish transportation impact districts for fee and lieu payments for small and mid-sized projects. And I'm going to say small and mid-sized projects could apply either at the building permit level, and this goes to the loophole we were talking about, or it could go at the plat level, plat approval level. The reason to go at the building permit, well, I guess I have to go to the next slide to explain that one, but I'll, let's stick here for a second. No, stay back where you're, sorry, thank you. So in a transportation impact district, which is increasingly widely used, and Montgomery County uses it, Baltimore City uses it, Prince George uses it to some extent, Delaware uses it in all of its urbanized areas, there's, most of the West Coast towns and cities use it, is that it's a way of capturing a couple of things. It's a way of capturing the aggregate development over time. So yes, in theory, you know, projects that are in the pipeline are captured in what Mr. Mudd talked about with background development and background trip growth. A lot of those times, though, that's done at a very high regional level, and so you may capture this development... A lot of those times, though, that's done at a very high regional level, and so you may capture this development, you know, in the regional model, or you may capture it at the TIS, and you may capture it in both or neither. But this allows you to, regardless of whether something is captured in a study or not, it allows you to really kind of capture um the aggregate, the aggregate impacts of development over time. Excuse me. And you do that by collecting, again, a fee and lieu for, for use on predefined projects or categories of projects on a per trip or a per unit fee. So, for example, a development occurs in the, on the right side in the blue, you could collect a fee and use the money for any project that was predefined or category of projects that was predefined, you know, on the, in that side of the world. We would probably actually expand the expenditure side of things to be, you know, further out, so it caught a little bit more of three oh one or four eight or what have you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm defining transportation impact district.
So I would say it is, um, it is just that, it is a, it is a, I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, actually Delaware, let me pull up the Delaware definition, which is very good. Give me one second, please. It is basically an area in which fees are collected and the aggregate impacts of development are measured, and then you marry the two. Right, so presumably, something happens on the west side of three oh one has an impact on the west side, a, a development on the west side of three oh one has an impact on the west side of three oh one and not at four eight eight and Radio Station Road. Or, you know, by the time it gets to four eight eight and Radio Station, it dissipates to the point at which, you know, um, it's not really meaningful anymore. So here we've crafted, you know, east side, a west side, and a downtown. And I'll talk more about downtown in a, in a few minutes.
So.
Your second bullet there said the funds are collected. Trying to put my hat on as if I, as if I were a developer. When in the life of a, a project could those funds be collected, or maybe even better?
It's like our major facility fee for water and sewers collected prior to UNO.
Yeah, so there's, there's a number, some places do it on plat, some places do it on building permit, some places do it in UNO. UNO is probably the simplest because you don't, you'll never have to do a refund on a UNO.
You're not getting your use in occupancy permit until you've paid your major facility fee for water and sewer.
There's less opportunity for change at that point.
Yeah.
One might argue. So a, a definition of a transportation impact district is a geographic area defined for the purpose of securing required improvements to transportation facilities in that area.
And I guess my one question, you know, from just a, a staff point of view is, what are these predefined projects? Are these things that we're going to be putting together? Is this, you know, I know that a lot of the roads, like I said, the three oh one, Washington Avenue, Route Six, we don't have control over. So are we going to come up with a kind of area plan to go along with these fee and loas like you were referencing before in order to, you know, put those funds? Because we, we had that issue with forest conservation fee and lieu, where we were taking in money for forests that was cut down, but we didn't have any forest mitigation banks to use that money. So we've just had this money sitting in our account, and the state finally came back and said, you're not allowed to take any more money until you figure out what to do with it.
So you have a couple of options, a lot of options here. You could use it for anything that is in the transportation element of the master plan. And I might add, that does include some projects that would typically be developer funded. So if, for example, that uh crossing, let's say, let's say the county or the town really felt it was important to build the crossing of the railroad tracks uh from heritage Pine Grove to Washington Avenue. Are they going to rename it as Pine Grove Parkway?
No, it's La Plata Parkway.
No, 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 going out to the west, there was.
Oh, no, it's just still Heritage Green Parkway.
Okay, yeah, well, um, marketing opportunity lost, but anyway.
Yeah, it's already dedicated.
That's an expensive project, right? And probably not one that, you know, a development, in all honesty, can afford to design, permit, and construct on its own. So you could say, we think that from a traffic mitigation perspective, you know, if you, let's say that it was three thousand dollars per unit and they were coming in at eighty-eight units, you know, take three thousand times eighty-eight, take that two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and put it towards that improvement. Or probably more practically, pay us that, and when you build it, we will pay you back.
Or CIP project.
Yeah, or it could be a CIP project you develop, it could be a county.
Sidewalk.
Yes, it could be a county or state, but I actually had a longer laundry list in here, and I took it off. See, so, so, yeah, it could be anything that you reasonably say is related to mitigating the growth in traffic. So you wanted to be multimodal, you could say, we're going to use things in the east side district to build Washington Avenue sidewalks, the radio station road side path, the intersection at forty-eight and Radio Station Road, we want that to be a roundabout instead of a traffic signal, so we're going to take our money and put it towards that. The idea is intergovernmental cooperation, right? That the state's only going to pay for a traffic signal at forty-eight and Radio Station, right? They don't want to pay for it, but you know what, if the town were motivated, hey, we'll put up four hundred thousand dollars from our traffic fees to, to keep that moving, and they might just say yes. I mean, that's, that is the way that the most successful jurisdictions have been in dealing with S H A. And I would say probably for the county, for counties too, is bring money to the table. Now, if bringing money to the table means you have to get everybody in a room to negotiate with the developer, Godspeed. It will drag on, but if there's a standard by which you're paying on a per unit or a per trip fee and the money goes into the pot, then the state can rely on that, or the county can rely on that money. So let's say we, you decided that the, the radio station road, you know, boulevard concept were important, and you knew that you were going to generate a million dollars in traffic impact fees. You know, you could say, we're going to take that, we're going to pay the county a million dollars over whatever number of years to do that. Yes, sir.
I have a question. If I understand you correctly, so in this recommendation, we would have these transportation districts, which I can see in the highly urbanized area where that would be beneficial because of the amount of traffic they get in the overall area. But in a more, in a smaller, more rural area, am I wrong in thinking that there would be unintended costs for this? In other words, the first thing that comes to my mind is if we have a lot of developments at one time, do we have the manpower, the staffing hours, the funding to do that because you're working on numerous different projects at one time and trying to coordinate intergovernmentally? And you have to still maintain a master plan of all this, of all the different studies.
Yeah, so this is constantly expressed as, well, somebody's got to do the work, right? If we want that roundabout, who's going to do that roundabout? Who's going to design it, permit it, construct it? And there's a couple of ways to deal with that. Or, or if they only give us two hundred thousand dollars and it's a million and a half dollar project, how's that ever going to get built?
So let me just clarify, I think I, I think I posed the question in a way that that you're going to give me the wrong answer because of my fault. I guess I'm asking is, will it cause a staffing, a needed staffing increase for the town of La Plata? In other words, is our town staff going to be doing all these various different things at one time? Because I'm thinking, well, they'll need more manpower, that's what I'm asking.
So it depends on what the approach is. Presumably, the town is not generally in the business of building many roads and probably only some sidewalks.
No, I mean, it kind of plays into what we're doing right now. So anything on Washington Avenue, you know, I, I don't know the, the full details on where we're at with that right now, but I know that there's been discussions on putting sidewalks along Washington Avenue. So I think the, the idea was that the town would help with one portion of it, but the, the county would actually do the designing. I think they've already done a lot of the design and the implementation, installation, those types of things. The Charles Street upgrades that we're doing, the town, you know, applied for the grant and is doing some minor work to help with the, the background research and those types of things. But it's the state that would be doing the actual implementation of that. So I don't think that that aspect of it would be a burden on staff, um, long term. We definitely need more staff, but I don't think that it's necessarily for that particular reason, if we went that route.
I would say it probably just becomes one more part of the development review and negotiation process in some respect.
Jamie, I'd like to back up when you were answering Evelyn's question, and you read a definition about the district, you used the words traffic and.
Transportation facilities.
Transportation, okay. Well, we're talking about APF. It's more than just transportation, it's water, sewer, fire protection, school, whatever, right? So with those words you're talking about, if, if funds were developed to address this traffic impact, is that the only thing that the funds could be spent for?
If you do it as an impact fee, yes. If you do it as an excise tax, you can spend it on, you know, six more officers for, for the chief.
Okay, so now we're getting into legalese, okay.
Nope, okay. Um, and I think the other thing here is it gives you flexibility, you know, so let's say Washington Avenue sidewalks really get moving, right? And they're like, county's ready to go, you guys are ready to go, uh, but um the other project working on that you had kind of committed the money in your mind to is now four years behind schedule. You were going to do it at that roundabout, the roundabout never is going to happen. You know what, let's flexibly move that money over from our CIP to move something that is going now. So it gives you that, the flexibility to address the ebb and flow of, of capital projects. It does not, to be clear, mean that if development A causes a major impact to intersection B, that those monies will necessarily be used to affect an improvement in intersection B. There may be, and there may be a hundred reasons why that is, could be a right of way, could be a utility issue, could be, you know, the project is too expensive for everybody to bear, or there's no impact from doing a project that some people would like and some people wouldn't. The idea is to improve the network, right? The transportation, the multimodal transportation network, and not necessarily improve one particular intersection. So that would be our, our second recommendation for projects that are currently in the pipeline, if you go to the next slide. That um, you go to some type of a tiered vesting process where only the largest projects, as they come out of their preliminary, let's, let's say Project X has its one or two year plat expiration come and go. If it's a small or mid-sized project, we would recommend the developer agree to a fee and lieu and on a preset dollar schedule and move along, right? As a practical matter, for, you know, a hundred and twenty peak hour trips in most places, there's relatively little that a single developer can do um in a constrained environment like this. When you get up to, you know, trips of two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, you know, now you're talking real impact. So that, that when they come in, when a larger project comes in after their vesting period, or whatever this kind of transition period is, you might want to tell them to do, let's, let's take a slightly larger look here. The other thing that we're suggesting is, given your general um interest in seeing downtown redevelopment, that you exempt infill redevelopment in downtown from any of this um approach. Because there, you can make a reasonable argument that a lot of those trips will occur on foot or have fewer total number of trips being, being taken. And we've seen some places, you know, where they're trying to spur economic development, not pile certain fees on. And I think that may be my last.
Yes.
Slide. So that's what our mind is at this point, based on the.
You did prompt me to raise, you and I talked about on the phone about, and I think I raised it at our last meeting, that personally, I have this dislike of fee and lieu, got a little bit more education from you, and now I'm thinking about what Director Harrington had said earlier about, you know, money came in, we couldn't spend it, so.
Well, yeah, so the forest conservation was a fee and lieu. The water and sewer is a impact fee, and that has been extremely beneficial because that's how we're doing our phased upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant. So it really does depend on how you uh set it up and how you plan to utilize it. If you already have an idea of what projects are going to be used, then that's great. If, like I said, forest conservation is a little bit different because you actually have to have land available to plant trees, or you have to have land available to put an easement on. So it's a little bit different than that. These are physical, you know, improvements that you're doing to the built environment that are much more easily done. It's hard to find just a large piece of land that someone's going to say, yeah, sure, you can have that and just put a big easement on it, and I don't get any money out of it. It's a little bit different.
So you, you've helped clarify in my mind, and, and conservation was, forest conservation is a perfect example of that. I mean, if we collect money from a person who needs to cut down a bunch of trees and we can't grow those trees somewhere else in the town, you know.
We can, we just have to set up the process, which we hadn't been able to do yet.
But you use the word impact for, when we talk about many of the facilities, the, the concept, the way you were just using it of impact makes a lot more sense. So the likelihood of us raising the funds and actually using it to address that impact is higher.
Okay.
So the draft that we saw a couple of weeks ago, um, it is based, it is drafted off of the county.
So the, don't, so the traffic section was just me kind of throwing things together. So that portion, and that's why we, we brought Jamie in to try to start this conversation because I quickly realized I was out of my element. The water, sewer, and, and school seat sections, those are to the point where I've gotten input from the Board of Education. I've gotten input from McCrone, from our Director of Operations, and those are a little bit more straightforward. So, yeah, don't pay too, too much attention to the text that is in the draft APFO because that was just me throwing things together.
Now that we've had this discussion and have some ideas, but without having the draft to, you know, look at and compare our ideas to and, and provide them to you, will you now update that section and give us another draft to review?
I think it, we need the recommendation one or recommendation two direction because otherwise we're writing a lot.
Right.
So, so the way I saw it is I wanted to go through a little more detail tonight and get either a head shake, you're on the right track, or no, and then be able to go back and start drafting. So um I'll, I'll look one way or the other. I know there's discomfort with a, a fee approach. I don't, to be candid, I don't see a good way to get at those projects that are in the pipeline in the next two to four years without some type of a fee approach. And I should say that it may be an impact fee, it may be an excise tax, or it may be a negotiated fee and lieu based on what you set a schedule. I have to talk through with the town attorney what the right, you have the authority to do all three, isn't this valid? So the counties don't have that authority, but you do, so.
So it would have to be a fee that we could actually utilize, and it sounds like the impact fee is the best type of fee to have.
I, I think generally, when you're looking at infrastructure, yes.
Yeah, because it's kind of, because we're small and we're growing way beyond our comfort and um what we have staffing for police, you know, um, wastewater treatment plant staffing, you know, public work staffing. So we would definitely need to increase staffing as we bring these new developments online. So my, my other thought was when Steeplechase was built, Stagecoach wasn't a dream, it was a part of it. It was, it was there, it existed. Why wouldn't we have used the area plan? And I, I really would like to see an aerial plan because if we, when we look at land that could be developed for future use for, you know, residential or whatever, it would give us a, a plan at that beginning to know how to mitigate what we have, the issue we have right now in the south with West quadrant in Steeplechase and Stagecoach. That's an issue, people live in Steeplechase, they don't live in Stagecoach, they don't, people in Steeplechase don't want Stagecoach coming through, and they, they're not going to go down there and turn and all of that. But if we made, you know, had some awareness of that so that we could have put it in place, I would, I think that that's going to be the best approach as we move forward to look at the area plan. as we move forward to look at the area plan. And I know you said that the traffic impact study gives us more detail, but it doesn't mitigate the wide scope. So how do, you know, I would like to see if we could merge or marry the two in some type of way so that we don't find ourselves in this situation that we're in now where everybody's, you know, thinking, well, this is my development. I don't want people driving through. I don't want you over there because you're going to increase traffic. But we would have already mitigated those issues or at least have a plan for it. You know, so if that's possible to have the area plan and traffic impact somewhere in there, I think that would be a good idea as we move forward.
Yeah, so we have, and you could go to any level of refinement, but we have a transportation element of the comp plan, which could satisfy that requirement. You have, for example, Pine Grove, you know, could be and frankly is a you know, area plan unto itself. So I, we would just kind of take what they have and kind of make that the core of our east side plan, if you will.
Development.
The totality, the totality of it, the totality of it.
But we have several phases in there that already have the final plan. So how do you?
You only have one with a final plan, right? And only part of one with a final plan.
For Steeplechase?
No.
No, 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 Pine Grove.
Oh, Pine Grove. We have final plats for neighborhood K and O.
Yeah, just.
Okay, you know, for O as well.
O is done in December.
Oh, okay. So it would depend, you know, if they are, if they truly build within their final plat, then that's their right. And but the clock is ticking, right? But even on, on K, they're only building the first phase of that first phase, right? At this point, they have permits in for what, 68 of the 100 and some odd? How complicated, I know. But there's phases, there's like K1, 2, and 3, right?
It's. Yes, there are three different final plats for neighborhood K. And they have, we have issued, and actually we just issued more today. They, they keep submitting. So because they have all three final plats recorded for neighborhood K, we're assuming all 176 are coming now because they're giving us four or five every other day.
And and I would dare say for any developer who is listening today, Janine will get a run on the office in the next, you know, two to four weeks.
Interesting, right?
It's a good.
Three years first.
I kind of have a feeling where it's going to be close. Going to be close because then we're moving, I think if they move to neighborhood Q, which has 576 multifamily units, you're going to reach that very quickly. But it, it all depends on the timing and the phasing that they go with.
But if you go with a fee-based approach, I think you, that whole agreement kind of goes out the window to some extent. Because you're paying on a, just to some extent. Because there's no longer a traffic impact study for them to do. Right?
I guess I.
Depends on how we draft it.
I guess there's just so much information I missed it. So what is the alternative to the fee-based approach?
To do a site by site by site study. So a 30 unit subdivision comes in, 100 unit subdivision comes in, they can be right next to each other and technically they do their own studies. Right?
And I think you were recommending that we be more comprehensive along the lines of what you.
But that doesn't, that doesn't address the issues that we currently have. So we wouldn't, we definitely wouldn't go in that direction.
Yeah, and that's what we, that's why I wanted to just like step back a little bit from our last commission meeting and talk about this a little bit more. And I always give the example, I may have used this before, when I was in Baltimore City, my first traffic impact study panel, there was a Walgreens at the corner of Fleet and Central. And whatever it is, 10,000 square feet, whatever, whatever. Fine, do their study. Nothing they can really do about it. Month later, I come into another panel because I'm forgetful. There's a CVS opposite corner, 10,000 square feet, same number of trips, right? Nothing they can do about it. But you put them together and now you got a problem.
So we want to use best practices, right? And so we're looking at the county. Are there any other APFOs that we could look at?
There's tons.
Well, maybe similar size and scope.
Yeah.
No.
Municipalities?
No. So I have looked, I looked far and wide.
Okay.
And there are no municipalities similar to the town that have an adequate public facilities ordinance. It's generally counties that have that level of review. But when you, you have to remember that when we talk about the county's APFO and the traffic impact study that they're doing, it is a site by site analysis. So if we were to adopt the county's APFO, we'd have to do a lot of changing to kind of get away from that site by site. But that is what it is. When you, when a project submits a plan, they have to do a preliminary APF analysis to, or scope to kind of see, you know, what their impacts would be. There is some background data from other developments, but a traffic impact study as kind of shown by the county is a site by site review.
Is that best practice?
That, I think that's subjective.
It's decreasingly the best practice.
It's what?
It's, it's becoming less and less the common practice.
But it's an accurate.
In order to adopt the the county's plan with the, all of their nuances about the traffic impact, how much effort is it going to take to go through there and remove that element? Because she said you.
So I think there's, there's two ways to do it.
Okay.
One way is to literally take, the, the ordinance, the actual ordinance is only two or three pages long at the most, maybe not even that. Right? It's like one.
Yeah, it's very, it's very short.
It's, there's the implementing manual that is more complex. So from a drafting something for your review and the council's, you know, approval, that's fairly painless. If we were going to go and make major changes to the totality of the manual and then try and put it into the town ordinance, I would come back and tell you I have a lot of work to do and I'd like to see you back around Labor Day. But I think if we're taking the approach that we've talked about, which is kind of a, a hybrid on the hybrid, meaning, you know, for anything, anything small, fee and lieu. For anything that's medium, that's in the process, fee and lieu. For anything that's really large, when their vesting rights expire, then we'll come back and we may do a study or may determine to not do a study and do a a fee and lieu. That's kind of what the, I think that's the way I've laid it out here.
I think it's, it's, if we can get a general consensus, if we're okay with the area district kind of fee direction, let's get in a draft. And then we can review that more closely and and kind of look at the county's APFO. Look at this and see if there's anything that we want to change, add, do that kind of thing. But I think at this point, we, we really just need to get something drafted. But I think we need the, just the consensus, are you okay with, do you, are you really want us to just go with the county's APF and amend as which may be, you know, a lot of amending? Or do we want to try to look at this other more comprehensive review process?
So for the sake of concluding whether or not we have a consensus, is there any commissioner opposed to that approach?
John Mudd here. My discussions with Jamie earlier in the week, I noted my disdain and concern about strictly impact fee as an, as a method for APFO. And again, that based on my tenure with Charles County. My, my recommendation is always going to remain that the town needs to adopt an APFO traffic impact analysis ordinance. It doesn't have to mirror the county. It doesn't have to mimic it. But the county has, you know, had good success with their program. So I suggest it's a good starting point. Fee and lieu for little projects, small projects possibly. But to me, there's, there's a big trade off between requiring the developer to have the responsibility to study and mitigate versus the town collecting money and then left with the task of figuring out, what are we going to do with this money? I don't think that gets us where we need to be. I understand and agree that the, with all the entitlements that have occurred for most of the projects underway today, this ordinance won't be applicable to them unless they expire. But there's a lot of projects down the line that have yet to reach their entitlement level where APS study would be crucial, in my opinion, to ending up with a project that's not going to adversely affect the town. So again, my, my point of view is an APFO ordinance or traffic is essential. I wouldn't be opposed to some potential language for impact fees for smaller type of things. And so that's really where I sit right now.
So Commissioner Mudd, did I hear you say that you're hearing Jamie is recommending that only impact fee would be the option? I don't think.
No, I'm, I'm hearing as this discussion goes on, all sorts of intertwined, you know, let's do a study, but let's do an impact fee, you know. It just seems to be becoming more confused in my point of view as the evening goes on. I mean, he had step one, step two, step one, do an APF ordinance, step two, consider impact fees as, as two separate line items. Now it sounds like we're discussing some sort of hybrid creature, which I'm not sure gets us where I'd like to see us.
Let me try to rephrase what I think I heard Jamie say, just for the sake of us trying to be on the same page. Pardon me? Well, okay. Well, some key, key things out of it. I'm hearing that we take it as a comprehensive approach or the area approach as Evelyn mentioned.
Meaning, meaning not smaller site-specific traffic studies.
That's correct. Right. And then I guess piggybacking on Commissioner Mudd's comment about the fees, I, I'm thinking I'm hearing from you that we still have options on how to address the impacts that we discover upon doing this comprehensive study. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just, please look at the last slide real quick. You had it there a second ago. So this is, this is perhaps not as precise as it could be, but it's kind of a way of looking at things is any development, but let's assume that either has, it does, it is, we've never even heard the project before. Or it is in some way, some part of the process up to final plat. Up to 35 peak hour trips, no matter what, pay your fee and move along. Right? That way, everybody gets, is paying some reasonable share. Right? Except downtown, we would exempt. 36 to 200, maybe that's the right number, maybe it's not. I don't know. It's, let's call it midsize developments. Fee and lieu. And that's probably the one that's more discussable, I suppose. But anything over 200 peak hour trips would indeed get its own study. And if you go back to slide 14 for a second. Oh, just go back to.
I just have a quick question while he's going back. So I straightened my mind. So what you're asking us to do is to give a consensus on whether we want recommendation one or two, correct? Because I'm.
I think it's, I think it's, I think they are, I think they are, they're not mutually exclusive, right? I'm, I'm looking for things that we don't know anything about today. We've never heard of.
But I mean, just to put on paper, you want us to give consensus on one order?
No, no, but both.
Correct.
Yeah, both. So, so for things that we've never heard of, projects we've never heard of. Well, let me back up. You would always have, to Mr. Mudd's point, we need in order for Janine to be able to do her job and add a public facilities ordinance, right? In order to get the town to the table. Beginning. What we do with that ordinance, like how it becomes operative, there's then become like two tracks. Right? One is for, what do you do for things that are in the pipeline that are your known knowns? Right? And one track is, what do you do for projects that we have no idea about?
So let me reclarify, if I hear you correctly, what you're asking us is to say yea or nay to doing both recommendation one and two on paper so you'd have a draft. There's no other option that you're asking us to consider right now. Is that correct?
I'm just trying to make sure I didn't make a recommendation three real quick.
Yeah, those, those are the two kind of directions that we can go or, you know, like, I think, I think at this point, we just, are you, are you, we can certainly drill down certain sections, but do we want to look at very sites, like site specific, each project has to submit its own traffic impact study? Or do we want to have a more comprehensive view and then we can take a look at the individual projects and see if there's other mitigation that's required?
So, okay, so just, let me try to be clear. So recommendation one is establish an APF.
For the county's ordinance.
For the county's ordinance with some modifications. However, that would only apply to projects that we don't really know about and/or projects that are large. Right?
And or projects that have lapsed their time.
So that's kind of where the, that's where the, that middle part comes in. So, so a development that in and of itself, now if we go back two slides, a development that in and of itself is going to create 70 peak hour trips. Right? Let's say it's, let's say, say it's one of the neighborhoods in the interior of Pine Grove. Right? Do you really want to do a study for 70 or 110 trips in the middle of Pine Grove when you may have already studied all the other pieces in the aggregate?
Yeah.
You say before, you said the individual traffic impact studies are subjective. The, the builder brings the study forward. It can tell us anything that they want us to see. So how is that beneficial if we get those studies and they're not, you know, they're based up on the objective, subjective view of the developer and his traffic person? How does, how does that get us out of the situation we're in now?
I don't think it does.
Okay, so you're making that recommendation. Is that the best path forward? We're looking, if we're going to do this, we're looking for the best path forward. So we're in situations that we're in with Steeplechase, Stagecoach and.
Let me, let me clarify.
Okay.
I, I think what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get rid of the underbrush here. Right? Your smaller developments, even your midsize developments, right? We can do study after study after study after study and come to the same, you know, micro level conclusions, site by site by site conclusions, right? If you look at neighborhood B, C, D, E, F, and they're all under 200, you know, take their money and move on.
If. One thing I need to interject here is that a traffic impact study is not a subjective exercise. It is a, it's based on science and mathematics.
And assumptions.
And that, the net result should be an accurate for, you know, prediction in terms of what the impact will be. There are traffic studies that, that work on the margins. They try to downplay this and upplay that and try to give a positive spin to it.
I would say respectfully, everyone that I've seen come through the town at this moment for the past three and a half years I've been involved with you has required significant rework based on professional guidance of our firm or a couple of others.
Correct.
The assumptions. And so that's why I'm saying clear out the underbrush. Take the small and midsize developments, have them pay a fee, let us focus on the big guys. Right? So when I used to be a basketball referee, the offici, the officiating instructor would say, major in the majors, don't major in the minors. Right? Don't call all your ticky tack fouls. Right? Go for the big stuff that's really going to, that causes an impact to the game.
So we're hearing everything you're saying and we're, we're trying to form an opinion based upon the guidance you're giving us. But I'm going to tell you, every time I think I've got it, you turned around and muddied it up for me. So give me some.
One, adopt an ordinance.
Okay.
That gets people in the door.
Okay.
Anybody, whether they're one unit or 700 units.
All right.
To Janine's point, I guess we would be setting the mark. We'd be the first ones.
Technically for, yeah, like I said, I did research for any municipalities and none of them had an APFO.
Okay.
Well, I, I think we could say that we're all in favor of adopting one, correct?
Right, we've hit that part.
Okay.
They, I should say they do, but typically they adopt the counties, you know, that's, that's why you don't see long sections of other municipal code.
Let's not reinvent a wheel that works.
That's one. So we've established an APF. You've had finding the fact that there will be, there is or will be a traffic problem with your development. Great. Next. For any, let's, let's forget about pipeline or non-pipeline for a second.
Okay.
Anything that is small to midsize, and let's define small as under 35 trips for a moment. Pay a fee and move on.
Okay.
There's very little value in doing a traffic study for something that's going to generate less than 35 peak hour trips.
So.
And in fact, that's the, that's the county's standard. The problem with the county's standard is that all these little twos, threes and fours don't pay anything in the.
So paying the fee.
Mm-hmm.
What are we going to do with it?
So that, so that's, I want to, I want to point something out that, that kind of floating around in my poor sad little brain right now. So for a traffic impact study. So for a traffic impact study, kind of recommendation one, let's say recommendation one, it is site-specific, and generally, any improvements are to do with that site or two intersections that are directly within.
For recommendation one, we're simply saying, we're going to have an adequate public facilities ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And that for any large project, and we can define what large means in a minute, we are going to require a traffic impact study. Now, that traffic impact study could result in a site-specific improvement, an intersection improvement, a new roadway, whatever, whatever. Or it could say, you know what? The impact here is so dispersed, we're just going to negotiate a fee and move, and pay it and move on. I'm not trying to muddy the waters here. I'm trying to fence us in.
But what I'm saying is, like, recommendation one is really more site-specific as far as.
Distinguish between an adequate public facilities ordinance and what you do with it.
Right.
Right? What you, because an adequate public facilities ordinance could say, do a study, don't do a study, pay a fee, don't put, so.
But recommendation number two is more, we're determining how much of an impact you're going to have on the area that you're in. We're going to get an impact fee, and then we can actually get some of these CIP things done, and transportation element initiatives and other things done.
And if you're looking on the.
What I'm hearing is, large here, but the, what I last heard you say, Jamie, took me away from the idea of being comprehensive.
Well, they still have to look at that, what their site is, and how many trips there are, and, you know, they have to see what they're going to be impacting.
And with that individual traffic study.
No, no, for what size development.
Well, and that's, like I said, we have to set parameters.
So typically, for these where you pay a fee, there's a spreadsheet you fill out that says, I've got 186 units, you generate 142 peak hour trips, you pay your fee based on that, and you don't, you do nothing else.
So can we let you guys deal with that piece of it? Can we just get to where we want to go? We know that we want an adequate public facilities ordinance.
And we like the idea of the impact fee?
Yes.
For, for small to mid-sized developments, let's not study them to death. Let's.
I think at this point, we just need to draft something.
Yes. And for large developments, and maybe I confuse things with the whole vesting issue. Well, we can deal with it. And then for large developments, anything over Y, then we go into a real live traffic impact study process, where we have adopted.
You guys will bring it back.
Okay.
That's my plan.
Small to large, whatever, you guys come back with it. We know we want to move forward. We know that we want fees that we can actually utilize. We don't want fees that we collect and can do nothing with. So they need to be beneficial to the town, and certainly, you know, looking at the size and how they will impact our staffing, and, you know, the different organizations that we have within the town, how they, that those fees would be, help us, you know, as we grow.
Mm-hmm. All right, that's, let's do that.
Small, medium, move on. Large, two feet long.
Okay. Moving on to other sections, yes, you may.
Thank you, Jamie, for your time.
Thank you.
So the other areas that we have established, and luckily, the remainder are a little bit more straightforward. Thank you, Jamie. So, within the code, the areas on water facilities, wastewater facilities, and the school, school seat allocations are a little bit more straightforward. I had McCrone go through, and I think the main goal of our water and wastewater APFO sections are to really establish the elements of how our developments are being reviewed. So as we've brought McCrone on to do the actual utility reviews, we didn't, we noticed that we didn't have a water sewer model for the entire town. So that's something that we, we want to do, but we just don't have that. So each project has to submit a water and sewer model to determine what their impacts are to the water and sewer system. Luckily, for water and sewer, it's cut and dry. You have this many gallons per day that we can pull from an aquifer. We have this much that we're already utilizing, and we have this much left. So, you know, as we're reviewing these projects, and actually, I, my goal is to take my updated development capacity analysis to the council on Tuesday, I apologize now, because you're probably going to have a hard time looking at that, because I had a hard time making it. But if those are, they're more finite, and water is a little bit more finite than sewer. We have control over our wastewater treatment plant, we have a, I know we have our wastewater capacity management plan, that we have a three-phase, I think it's three phases, to upgrade different modules and to add on capacity as we need it. That's why we have our major facility fee, impact fees, to outpay for water and sewer infrastructure, and use that towards, you know, fixing our wastewater treatment plant. So I think that these are fairly straightforward. It's, you know, if you're doing a, a development, you know, that has a certain number of EDUs, here's what we're looking for. So McCrone.
Let me throw a monkey wrench into that.
Please don't.
Maybe, well, maybe you'll throw it back.
I was kidding.
I, I think the town has pretty much absolute control over wastewater.
Yes, absolutely.
But we are somewhat beholden to county and the state of Maryland on water.
We are all what? We have, the MDE is the one that does the water appropriation permits, and so at this point, we have a water appropriation permit to pull a certain number of million gallons per day. And we are, we are approaching that. And you will see, like I said, I'm having several people double-check my calculations, because I'm not a math person, but I'm having them double-check my calculations, double-checking the projects that I have on, and I've broken it up into projects that have been approved, like have final plat, or like, we're issuing building permits that are under active construction, stuff that has preliminary approval, so any preliminary plats, things that are pending approval, so they're in the review process, and then conceptual development. And each section kind of totals up how much water usage would be estimated based on our 250 gallons per day per EDU, is what we're kind of going with. I think generally, the number is closer to 222, but to be, kind of give ourselves a little bit of room, we're using the 250 gallons per day number. So you're going to see that with the development, we're going to reach a point where unless we get the agreement with the county to connect water systems or to buy water, we're not issuing any more approvals, because we are going to run out of water appropriations. So that one definitely is finite. The wastewater treatment plant, again, we can upgrade, we can add mods, we can do different things to improve the quantity and quality, so we do have full control over that. And I think McCrone did a pretty good job of laying out the standards needed to kind of do the reviews, so we could make sure that not only are we meeting the, that they're building the infrastructure that they need on-site, if they need to build an additional pump station or to contribute to a pump station, I think that's all kind of taken care of within those sections. So unless you have any specific questions, I won't go into. No, those you can review. The, the school seat section, that one is one where I do have, we got the comments from the Board of Education, and they had made a specific recommendation that the town only look at school seat allocations that are available within schools, within the town's boundary. And while I undersee the, I see the rationale for that, the county is also pulling school seat allocations for schools that are within the town's boundary. And if you look at the number of school seat allocations at some of these schools, they're at zero. So that's not a fair nexus for determining how many school seats we would have, because technically, it would always be zero. So that is one question that I have, if you want to look at that section in a little bit more detail. What would be a, a good way of looking at how we would calculate our school seat allocations? I haven't, I did pose the question back to the Board of Education, so we can kind of continue that discussion, because like I said, it, it does make sense, but if the county's still pulling school seats from us as well, it's, you know, it's not a fair trade-off, in my mind. So we do need to talk about that one section further. I think everything else in the school section was fairly straightforward. We don't have control over construction of schools. We, you know, basically just need to figure out how many school allocations we can reasonably do without overburdening our school systems. And then, you know, in certain instances, how we can help with the, you know, the, the school board with their functions.
So, my hearing that the document that you've already given to us, a month ago, I guess?
So it was on the, do we attach it to this agenda too?
Sure.
Oh, okay. So definitely, if you go to the, was it the January 3rd? Yeah, it was the January 3rd planning, I can email it back out as well.
So, I, I guess I was piggybacking on what Evelyn said. I want, I want to make sure that we're looking at the document you want us to look at. Is that the one that we already have?
Yes.
Okay.
We, so, like I said, don't pay attention to the traffic, roads and traffic section, but everything else, we're looking at how we're reviewing subdivision site plans, the, the water sewer, school seats. And then one other thing that I did want to bring up, and, and you've, you've been amazing for staying here this long, but we've had several discussion items come up about emergency services and adequate public facilities. It was brought up at our Board of Education meeting the other week for the LaGrange subdivision that's proposed, and it's also a question that was posed by a resident, I think it's a resident, with regards to the discussion tonight, and how the town is going to accommodate emergency services. So I, I just wanted to make sure that I, I did address this, and that we can have a discussion around it, if it's something that we can figure out how to partner, or to figure out how we can help with those facilities. Obviously, we, we have our town police department that we can determine how many police officers we would need, and, and those types of things. We have no control over the hospital. We have no control over the LaPlata Volunteer Fire Department. We have no control over the sheriff's office. So the point was made that we're adding development, we're adding homes, but we are not helping to expand those emergency services.
So a couple of questions there. Is there some standard, you know, number of houses means as many more policemen, or?
That's why I got the big guy in here tonight. He knows a lot more than I do on the police matters.
Shiner, Chief of Police here in LaPlata. There are theories, there's numerous theories, like with anything else, on what is adequate staffing for a police department. Some use numerics, every 500 residents, you add an officer. Some look at what a community wants as far as available patrol time for police officers. That's the international chiefs of police model. So in that theory, you may say, I want my midnight team to have 75% of their time available to patrol, not just answering calls. Evening shift is normally when you're the busiest, so you may say that's, available patrol time may be 45%. We, the, the town had an organizational study done, and it projected out over the next 20 years, I think, what staffing should look like if the growth occurs that's going to, to be here. So, looking at that plan, it looks like we would have adequate officers to cover what's going to occur here on LaPlata. One of the things that, my experience, I've been doing this for 36 years, I assessed the police departments nationwide to see if they can become accredited. A lot has to do with the type of growth that you have. The vast majority of our call volume, especially that takes time, occurs in the, the retail district, much more than it does in the residential neighborhoods. I have eight buildings in this town that consume about 15 to 20% of my officer's time in any given month. So, and I always look at things for, you have calls and you have complex calls. So when the alarm goes off at someone's house, and the officers go, and the wind blew, or the storm came through and set off the alarm, that may take them three or four minutes, on scene, a few minutes to get there. But when they go to a retail place, and they handle a shoplifting call, or whatever it may be in the retail districts, those can be very time-consuming and tie up officers. So, we're happy with the organizational study, and it would, it projects out for us. The one thing, in the town, it's been good, I've been here for a little over nine years. I got here in 2013, I had 16 patrol officers. It's now 2023, and I have 25 officers on the books. One thing's important to remember is, one of our biggest time-consuming places is the hospital, because everybody who says, hold my beer, I'm going to go do whatever, tends to end up in an emergency room. So I have two officers in a, a public-private partnership, where the hospital pays half their salary, benefits, equipment, who are assigned there 40 hours a week. So there's two officers, 80 hours a week worth of coverage. So that's considered in that 25. The other thing that you, is always something when you, you look at growth, is how long it takes to get a police officer online, once you decide that you need that officer. So it takes us roughly three to six months to go through the hiring process. The hiring process is dictated to us by the Maryland Police and Training Commission. It takes seven to nine months to put them through the police academy, just depending on which academy. We have a good relationship with the Anarondale County Police Department, they've been training our officers for quite a while now. That's a seven-month academy. When they don't have seats, I historically used the Prince George's County Police Academy, which has a nine-month academy. And then, once they graduate the academy, they're on, in field training with another senior officer for another four months. So that process takes between 14 and 19 months, from the day we get the application till the time the officer is solo in a patrol car. So, those are, those are the things that we look at when we try to project out, and we, we work with planning a lot. I depend a lot on it. We kind of look at what's going on, and we know everything's subject to the economy. But when we, we get numbers and we look at something, we bring it to the council, and we try to make reasonable decisions to make sure that we're prepared for any growth that's coming.
And I'm pretty sure the hospital has their own ultimate kind of expansion plan, or that's one of the reasons why we did the hospital overlay zone, but it's not necessarily something that we are privy to at a town level. So that's not something I'm quite sure how we would address, if we were to address anything.
So, in my set management group, we talked about the vote, and this is something that I asked last year, probably, how we're going to accommodate, because we're the only community hospital in the county, how we're going to accommodate the vote in the town. So you gave me the data that I asked for, and I'll take that back next month.
Mm-hmm.
You were willing to have a conversation with Bill Ryanes, who does all of the planning for the vote of the hospital, to have that conversation, and you talk about how we, you know, support you.
Absolutely. That's, like I said, that's one of the reasons why we put that in our comprehensive plan, and created the hospital overlay zone, to try to make that a little bit more easily accessible. But I'm more than willing to do that.
You had mentioned we do not have control over the LaPlata Fire Department?
Mm-hmm.
I'm confused. It's a LaPlata, it's not a LaPlata Fire Department?
Do you know any details?
Who has control of that?
The fire department is in, in Charles County, other than a few paid medics, is a 100 volunteer system.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just know it's the LaPlata Volunteer Fire Department, so, but it's not associated with the town.
I should have keyed it on the word volunteer, not LaPlata. Gosh.
It's okay. Right. And I'm not sure, because I don't recall seeing anything in there, I'm not sure if it'd be the appropriate place to put it, an adequate public facilities ordinance, but again, I'm happy to, to reach out and to, to make that connection, if you think that's, that might be something to pursue.
Well, this may be just my opinion, I don't know if it's the rest of the commission's. I think it's important for the document to say something about each of those, all the emergency services, police, fire department, whether or not we have control, and even with the hospital, I would think, and you touched on the hospital overlay zone and all of that, it's, it's almost to what Jamie was saying, there's a ripple effect in any growth, and that's going to affect all of these other services. And we need to be able to be in a position to have a say about it. What are you going to do about the fact that you've just now caused the chief to think he needs three more officers?
Right.
Or whatever, okay? I think that needs to be on the table, and this would give us an opportunity to put it on the table.
Okay. So with that in mind, and I won't, I won't hold it up anymore of your time on that, but I will, I'll reach out to, you know, I'll reach out to the, yeah, the hospital, and then I can reach out to emergency services, I do have a connection. I do have a connection there. And then if you don't mind helping me with the, uh, or maybe Jeff, somebody with the fire department.
Yeah, uh, Jeff.
Okay.
I, I got a discussion with the chief tomorrow, so.
Okay, great. And then, you know, if there's something that we can include about the police department, um, you know, I'd be happy to do that as well. And that way we can have a kind of emergency services section, just to kind of, I know we do have some of that in our comprehensive plan. So that's maybe something that we could reflect.
Yes.
Um, into the code, um, on that sense, so I can do further research on that. So with that in mind, look at the water, sewer and school sections of the draft that you have. And then, you know, depending on what comments you have, um, we'll revise those and we'll come back with a, a traffic, revised traffic section and an emergency services section.
Okay. So does that bring us to the end of the APO?
Yes.
Discussion, APF discussion. Okay, so the next item on the agenda was matters of information. Is there anything to bring up for that?
I'm just going crazy, that's about it.
Is there anything to be brought up for the good of the commission before we adjourn? Not hearing any, it's, uh, about seven fifty-two. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you for joining us and have a good evening.